Good evening. Welcome to the March 14, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Vince Messina from Woodside Bible Church with us today to lead us in the invocation. So please rise for the invocation and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening. Thank you very much Mayor Slater. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, as we come into your presence before your throne of grace, it is with a sense of appreciation for your watchfulness over us this day and the measure of help that is ours by your grace. We thank you for our mayor, we thank you for this council, Father, their leadership and their governance of this city of Troy. We pray that as they transact the business on the agenda this evening, that you would give them unusual wisdom and discernment. Father, we pray for our city of Troy. We ask that you would watch over and protect those of our first responders, our Troy Police Department, our firefighters, our EMS, Father, all those that care to the needs and tend to the needs of our fair city. We thank you for your blessing over us this night. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Here.
All present. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is a presentation on Japanese sister city proposals with a presentation by Sarah Kitch, Skitch, and Minamori. If I could have them come forward please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
It's nice to be here.
If you could give those to this clerk, thank you.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Sarah Sketch. I'm a senior at Troy Athens High School. I am in a class called Innovation where we work individually or in groups to connect with our community, which can be either our school, or our city, or even the world. I have chosen for my project to connect with Troy on the matter of a friendship city, not a sister city as the retainer says, because of time limits and eventual advancement into a sister city. I chose Japan as the place of my proposed friendship city because of my studies in the language and culture. I believe this relationship can benefit our economy and the cultural knowledge of our Sister cities have a, are cities with a strong relationship holding them together which can allow them to interact more freely with other cities than if the cities didn't have such a relationship. These cities, they have exchanges through many different forms such as pen pals or sending city staff or schools over to the other city. We in Michigan have two sister states. Shiga Prefecture in Japan and Sichuan Province in China. A recent exchange with one of our sister cities in Japan was this last summer when the Toyota City Junior Orchestra performed with the Detroit Symphony Youth Orchestra at the orchestra hall. Now, a friendship city, which I am proposing to all of you, is a, is similar to a sister city, except it's not as concrete and restrictive as a sister city. As in, if the two cities are new to the idea or they're uncertain if they wish to be a complete sister city, it's a very good first step before becoming a sister city. Now, a friendship city, creating one, requires at least two fields of exchange. Now Troy has a very high, puts very high importance in its education, which with a friendship city can be, can exchange through things such as a sister library program where books are exchanged, which can, which can help develop cultural knowledge between the two cities, or a pen pal exchange, or even the exchange of city staff. Also, business in Troy, which is future forward business and can be exchanged through companies which are head, the Michigan-Troy companies have headquarters, some of them in Japan. Now Michigan, our sister state, Shiga Prefecture, has 11 out of 27 Michigan sister cities. It's Lansing has a sister city with Otsu, which is Shiga's capital. And Shiga, the reason, main reason why we have Shiga as a sister state is because it is home to Lake Biwa, the largest lake in Japan. And it has brought about many good exchanges such as the Michigan, the Great Lakes-Shiga High School Science Exchange Program, where eight high schoolers in Michigan are brought together with eight high schoolers from Shiga. And they go first to the Great Lakes and then to Lake Biwa and they study the lakes and water and how to improve on keeping our Great Lakes safe. And an Athens high school student last year, Monae Manjia, was awarded a scholarship to go to Shiga with seven other Michigan students and eight other Japanese students. And currently, Michigan has 101 sister cities with other countries, not necessarily Japan. But 27 of these sister cities are with Japan, such as Nova, Novi with Owani City in Almory Prefecture, Ann Arbor with Hikone City of Shiga, and Lansing with Otsu of Shiga. Troy has one sister city with L.A. Mount Lebanon government, Lebanon, which we unfortunately cannot interact with them in person because of air restrictions. The lists on the presentation show the 27 sister cities which Michigan has with Japan. And I have mapped out the placement of the sister cities with Japan, which you can see are widespread, even going from the upper bins to the very tip, to the lower southeastern edge of Michigan. Japanese companies are, there are many in Troy. There are currently 14 businesses with headquarters in Japan. We, if we create a relationship between cities with similar industries, resources, or geography, it would allow the flow of ideas and to improve business and promote economic development. This has been seen in many different sister city relationships and even friendship city relationships, such as the, in Minneapolis, Minnesota, with their sister city Harbin, China, which is known as the City of Ice, where they put much, since their weather is often snowy and they create tourism with this weather and bringing money. And Minneapolis is bringing, is looking towards their sister city and attempting to bring in this idea of tourism through winter. On the map, I have, and I also have listed the Japanese cities with, Japanese companies in Troy which have headquarters in Japan. There are, if you look on page, the first page on the back of the cover of your packets, you will see that the highlighted names of the companies are the ones which do not have sister cities. The ones that do not have highlights already have them. There are different cities in different prefectures and even larger cities like Tokyo have different districts which are broken down when dealing with sister cities because of the expansiveness of the city. If you look on the second and third page, it lists the sister cities which Michigan has. The highlighted names are the ones with Japan and the blue one is Troy with Lebanon. My proposal to you is to develop a friendship city relationship, which is basically a smaller step in the way of creating a sister city relationship with a city in Japan. Before I can research a fitting city to be a friendship city with, in Japan, I have to ask for first your approval and then your input in what you, what you the council would like to have in a friendship city. Whether it's a larger city such as Tokyo with a bunch of business which would have to be narrowed down into the districts and specifically what types of business or education, or if you're looking for a less urban city such as the ones in Shiga Prefecture. And also, I'm asking you to, on the fifth page, I believe, is a questionnaire about what your ideas are on my proposal and how I could improve it and look for a friendship city. In particular, such as one in Shiga if you would like, since that is our sister state, or if you would like one where one of the companies are headquartered, or if you would like one anywhere else. Any more questions?
Thank you Sarah. What a great presentation. I think the best thing that you could do is allow us to review your presentation and the documents that you gave us and then individually speak with us or ask us to email you answers and information on your, on your packet that you gave us today and then we can talk further about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is C2, which is a presentation on the establishment of a Global Troy Advisory Committee. And I see that Eleanor Yun, our management assistant, is with us this evening and she's going to do a presentation that I think is going to wow you when, when it's finished. And I just have to say before we begin that I've been part of this, putting this together. I haven't been part of the presentation, so I get to benefit, you know, from people thinking that I'm part of it, but as you all will remember, back in 2015, the Troy City Council adopted Celebrate Diversity as one of our top 10 strategies for the city. And if you happened to listen to the State of the City a couple of months after that, you would have heard me announce that I had a plan to launch the Global Troy Advisory Committee. It's taken some time to do that. I've met with staff and Eleanor, who has been such an instrumental part of putting together this, this committee. So please sit back and watch the presentation that Eleanor has put together. And I just, before we even start Eleanor, I want to thank you for, for all you've done for, for me, for this presentation and for the city. So it's all yours.
Thank you Mayor. Okay. So Global Troy is an initiative to celebrate Troy's cultural diversity, enhance community connections, and create a more inclusive city. So as you all know, Troy is a very diverse city. Approximately 28% of Troy residents are foreign born. This makes Troy the city with the second highest percentage of foreign born residents in the metro Detroit area. Also, approximately 30% of Troy residents are of a race or ethnicity, sorry, ethnicity other than white, a number greater than the national or state average. Troy is also home to many international businesses. From headquarters to regional offices, companies from 22 different countries are settled in Troy residents are also highly multilingual. Approximately 32% of Troy residents speak a language other than English at home. According to Troy School District, 73 other first languages are spoken by Troy students. So as you can see from this data, Troy is a city with rich cultural diversity. And this diversity is a strength. Diversity brings growth and vibrancy, fosters the exchange of new ideas, and broadens perspectives. Not many cities are able to enjoy this variety of different cultures. And even if they do, a lack of collaborative efforts within a city can prevent a community from truly benefiting from cultural diversity. Then how can the city of Troy be a leading agent for bringing these cultures together and creating a welcoming community in which everyone can benefit? Global Troy Advisory Committee would play an integral part in achieving this goal. The proposed makeup of the committee will include 11 Troy residents. They will be appointed by the mayor with city council approval. And the committee as a whole would be reflective of the diverse cultural makeup of Troy. And included within the 11 members would be one representative from the city council. This committee will not only allow the city to hear directly from our residents, but also further encourage dynamic cross-cultural exchange between them. It will also provide valuable resources for the city to develop a set of very important cultural skills. The first skill is cultural knowledge. Cultural knowledge is learning about and familiarizing oneself with cultural characteristics such as history, values, belief systems, behaviors, and many more. The next skill is cultural awareness. Cultural awareness is about acknowledging and understanding that cultural differences as well as similarities exist. Cultural sensitivity is about being respectful and accepting cultural differences without assigning values such as better or worse, or right or wrong. And none of these three skills are enough to stand on its own. When the three skills come together, one is able to develop a set of behaviors and attitudes called cultural competence that is beyond knowledge, awareness, and sensitivity. Through the continuous development of this skill over time, a culturally competent organization can work beyond implicit, implicit social biases and perform effectively in a cross-cultural setting. And it is the goal of this Global Troy Advisory Committee to help the city achieve cultural The proposed scope of activities includes six different focus areas for the committee. The first area is the city government. The committee will provide resources for staff training and education, as well as training opportunities for the city council, boards, and commission members. The committee can also come up with innovative ideas to make residents from different cultural backgrounds to feel welcome at city facilities. The committee can also help achieve cultural competence in community. For example, many events that celebrate cultural diversity are, are already being held by different community partners, partners throughout the city. By bolstering those relationships that are already in place and seeking additional partners, the committee can help the city become a connecting agent between residents and those community organizations. The third focus area is civic engagement. How can the city reach out to and connect with those various ethnic groups that have very different ideas about government and do not necessarily have the same level of trust in government? The committee can help the city find ways to build trust and encourage them to be more The next focus area is public safety. The committee can help the staff gain more public trust by taking steps to ensure fair and impartial delivery of public safety services. It can also help improve emergency preparedness for groups that have language barriers. The fifth focus area is education. The Global Troy Advisory Committee can collaborate with Troy School District's Diversity and Inclusion Council and find ways for students to feel more welcome and included. Lastly, economic development is another important focus area. The committee can aid the city find a means to help business owners with diverse cultural backgrounds. Also, the committee can help the city strengthen their relationship with Troy Chamber of Commerce and explore new opportunities. Global Troy is an initiative that requires collective efforts from the city council, staff, and Troy residents. With the establishment of the Global Troy Advisory Committee, creating a truly connected, inclusive community can be a reality. At the next council meeting on March 21, a resolution for the establishment of the Global Troy Advisory Committee will be provided for your review. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we're not going to let you get away so, so quickly there. Before we, before I say anything, is anyone from council wish to say anything? You're going to wait for me. What an excellent job Eleanor, putting that together. I think it's, it's everything that I envisioned when I was thinking about putting this committee back together again, because now I'm hoping it will be an umbrella and bring everyone together. So as you talked about the next steps, this will be an advisory committee that will consist of 11 Troy residents if council approves this resolution at the next council meeting. And each committee member would be a representative of various ethnic groups of the city and be a catalyst for open and dynamic multicultural exchanges. The committee members would serve as a valuable resource for our city and bring different perspectives and aid the city council in adopting inclusive policy decisions and creating a culinary competent community. And as we all know, we are the number one most diverse city. We are the number one most foreign-born population in, in the state of Michigan. And what we really need to do is embrace that. That's part of our culture. That's part of who we are. And Eleanor, I think you've done such a great job bringing this all together for me and, and I couldn't be more thankful than, than the presentation that you did for me today and for city council and staff. What a wonderful representative of our city. Thank you so much. City Manager Kishnik, did you want to say anything or?
Well, of course, because, with Eleanor standing up there, she's a real asset in our office with her and Maggie and Stephanie and Beth. So it's, it's a real testament to everyone and as you said, Eleanor's brought together some internal staff from the police department and a few other agencies to, to begin the formation of this, to, to give ideas, but Eleanor's been the real point person on this. I should also mention, and this was just a presentation on the Global Troy Initiative externally, but internally Eleanor is also the point person for training at my staff meetings and leadership meetings throughout the year. And I see Podmas here, Ms. Kupma, she's, she's actually going to be part of that, I think, the first two times Eleanor, Podma?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's, it's an internal thing and an external, so it's, it's, it's really time, at least at city hall, we, we start putting some wheels in motion and, and connect like Eleanor has talked about in her presentation.
Eleanor showed me a great book. It's a very small book. It's about this thick. Talk, tell us a little bit about the book. It has very few words in it, but it, it talks about the East and the West. And it's kind of interesting. What's the name of the book again?
Um, it's called East Meets West. And it's great.
Eleanor, just one second. I'm, I'm confused. That was a birthday present to me.
Oh.
How did you get it?
Sorry, I let him, I let him borrow for a day.
I think I was snaking around in your office and I said, I'm going to, if I take this home overnight, maybe he won't miss it, so.
Well, the book is called East Meets West and it's created by this graphic designer. She's Chinese. She grew up in China, she grew up in Beijing until she was 13 and then moved to Germany. And as she was studying in Germany, she realized that they, a lot of, there were lots of different perspectives on certain things. And she, as being a graphic designer, she decided to create this book where she makes graphic comparison of different ideas. It's very interesting and I think it was a really great gift for the city manager because we often talk about this, different ideas that we have. So I'm glad you enjoyed it too.
I did. I really didn't know that was a birthday gift.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick.
When you're sitting from here and you watch this presentation, you watch this driver from the State of the City and you look at what we're looking at in this room, apparently we have some AP classes, I think, from the two high schools. And the very reason this is such a profoundly wonderful direction to take the city is sitting right in this room tonight. You are the picture of it. And I just want to applaud everyone that took, took this and drove it forward. I can't take credit at all, except that I do cheer you on, I know that. And I appreciate it. Appreciate it very much. You did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Thank you Eleanor. Thank you.
Thank you.
C council, this resolution will come back to the table at the next meeting. I would hope that you would take a look at that resolution and if you have any questions or comments, that would be a great time to, to bring it up. So, thank you. Next on the agenda- Next on the agenda is C3, which is a proclamation for the month of March 2016 as a Parenting Awareness Month, and I would be honored to go down to the podium and present to the education chair of Detroit Youth Assistance, Leonette Chiaplowski. Is that close enough? I know you, Leonette, by Leonette, so if I could meet you at the podium. Better to face this audience than this audience here. Leonette, it's my honor and privilege to once again present the proclamation for Parenting Awareness Month, March of 2016, and I'd like to read this into the record if I could. Whereas March is Parenting Awareness Month in the state of Michigan, and Parenting Awareness Month celebrates people who are raising children. This is all everybody in here, people raising children. Whereas Parenting Awareness Month seeks to draw public attention to the critical importance of parenting and helping children to become healthy, caring, contributing citizens. And whereas Parenting Awareness Month seeks to promote education and resources for developing parenting skills throughout the year, encourages the development of local parent networks, and encourages everyone to participate in the lives of all of our children. And whereas Troy Youth Assistance, a volunteer-driven, nonprofit organization, is committed to strengthening youth and families by preventing and reducing juvenile delinquency, child neglect, and child abuse through community involvement. And whereas Troy Youth Assistance is committed to providing practical programs which focus on parenting skills and prevention, understanding the ramifications of technology, including abuse and addiction, identifying dangerous trends and signs of trouble among middle school and high school students, raising responsible children who are able to resist peer pressure. And whereas Troy Youth Assistance actively participates in strengthening the lives of students in the Troy School District, sponsoring workshops for boys and girls who are struggling with the frustrations of adolescents, offering scholarships to provide skill-building opportunities, pairing children with adult mentors, connecting elementary-age students with high school role models in structured activities, recognizing and honoring youth for their exceptional accomplishments. So, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as Parenting Awareness Month, and be it further advised and resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role Troy Youth Assistance plays in the education of our youth and the parents in our community. And we support all their efforts and resources which promote, encourage, and support the importance of parenting awareness. Presented this 14th day of March 2016, it's signed by myself, all members of city council. Congratulations to Detroit Youth Assistance, and thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mayor Slater, city council. There are a few members of Troy Youth Assistance here with me this evening. I'd like them to stand so you can recognize them, too. I'd like to take a few minutes just to tell you about our family education program because we've made some changes this year, and I think you're going to be pleased to hear about the changes that we've made. We take great pride in the fact that we are the only organization in Troy that provides free, unlimited parenting opportunities to the parents in the Troy community. And I'd like to tell you about some of the programs that we have. This year, we really focused on student groups, small groups, intense groups, and we focused on middle school and late elementary-age students. Our girls' program was called Girls Stayin' Strong, and our boys' program was called From Anger to Frustration to Anger. And in both instances, we're really focusing on problems that face adolescents on a regular basis and teaching them how to deal with some of the issues. Not only were they programs for the children, they were four-week, they were sessions that were weekly for four weeks, but when, at the end of the sessions, we had their parents come in, and the parents then were able to dialogue and learn and understand the same skills that the children did and bring up their own issues with their children right there at the meeting. So, it made for a very nice dialogue between parents and children led by a professional facilitator. We probably worked with about 25 girls and about 17 boys, so it was a nice mix. That first group of girls, there were 16 4th, 5th, and 6th grade girls. I can tell you in the room that it was not a quiet place. It was a very lively discussion. That next one was middle school, and there were fewer, and, you know, they were a little bit more sophisticated, but it was just as good as that first session was. We also are doing a program which will begin at the end of April, and it's called, the program is referred to as Strong, and it's a program that focuses on tobacco, alcohol, and drug issues, including addiction. And we're partnering with the Rochester Youth Assistance to provide the program. There is a parent component, the parents, this is a six-week program. The parents will meet the first week and then again the last week. And typically, what happens is teens who become involved in some of these addictive kinds of behaviors which create issues for them, where they might get in trouble in school or with the law, where they have to follow through with some kind of commitment. This fulfills the obligation for them to attend these sessions. So, we do them twice a year, once in Rochester and then once in Troy. So, we're looking forward to. This will be our first year partnering with Rochester and running this kind of program. We also noticed in the last couple of years especially that our parents, the number of parents who are attending our parenting programs was dropping off. We recognize that parents are busy. They have active lifestyles. They can't always be at our programs on a particular day at a particular time. So, we took the initiative in the county. In fact, we're kind of proving to the county that it's something that can be done. We took the initiative to record our programs, some of our most popular programs, and we are now scheduled, they are scheduled on TSTV, Troy School TV, and we're also doing them on demand. So, parents will be able to sit down, maybe in a doctor's office someday when they're waiting for their children with their laptops in their hands, or maybe at home when they've had a particularly bad day, they'll be able to see some of our most popular programs. And a new program that we started in the fall, which is called Dare to Discipline, and it's for parents of pre-K to early elementary children. By the end of March, we will have six programs available for parents to view. And we work in partnership with Dr. Doug Carpenter, who was previously the chairperson of Troy Community Coalition, Insight Counseling. Judge Hardig is going to be one of our guests. Dr. Carpenter is interviewing her in a program that's going to be coming out at the end of the month on addiction. So, we're always listening to what's going on, what do people need, what kinds of conversations, and how can we be most, provide for parents the most beneficial opportunity for them to know what's going on in the community and how they can respond to it. We also had a little program, a little program, I should say, a small group program for parents of preschool-age children. We ran it at Niles Community School, and it's a program where we bring parents together and a facilitator talks to them about the kinds of parenting concerns and issues that they have, and those become the focus of the program. It, again, is a four-week program. It's in the morning. Childcare is provided for them, so they have the opportunity to hear that other parents are struggling with the same problems they are and have an opportunity to come up with possibly some solutions. All in all, we are very much committed to family education. We'll try anything to get parents involved. We want parents to know what's going on, and we want to stay on top of things ourselves. So, thank you very much for the proclamation, for recognizing what we do. We hope to continue doing it in Troy for a long time. Thank you.
There are no carryover items this evening. We have one public hearing that is scheduled. That is E2. That's a zoning ordinance text amendment, ZOTA 247, which is oil and gas extraction. And I see Brent Savadant, our planning director here, ready to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, city council members. As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, this is a zoning ordinance proposed text amendment for oil and gas extraction. This item was initiated by the Planning Commission. Their main intent was to regulate oil and gas facilities, including hydraulic fracturing, which is also known as fracking. And this is really done to protect property values in general and single-family residential property values in particular. In terms of steps that have been taken, this is discussed at numerous public meetings by the Planning Commission. They held a public hearing in June. They made a recommendation unanimously to approve it. There was a city council public hearing in July of 2015. City council wanted some time to evaluate this item further and also discuss it with the Planning Commission at a joint meeting. You'll recall, we had a joint meeting in September of 2015. There were three experts at the meeting. There was some great dialogues, some give and take, and a lot of questions that were asked, and we asked the three experts to respond to the numerous questions that were raised in writing, and they did so. The item went back to the Planning Commission, who considered it again, had a public hearing January 26th of 2016, and recommended unanimous approval. It's the same text amendment. Nothing's changed from when we discussed it at the joint meeting in September of 2014. One of the reasons for that is what's going on in the city of Southfield presently. You've probably heard that there's an application for a test well at the Word of Faith International Christian Center, which is a 110-acre site in the city of Southfield. The application specifically excludes fracking. That's important. However, there is still an application for a test well if they find that there's economic benefit to going further. I'm sure the MDEQ will consider actually drilling. The test well application was approved last Tuesday, and last Friday, there was a, the city filed a suit in Oakland County Court seeking injunction against the drilling. So, there's a lot of moving parts here, and we'll see what happens. Any specific technical questions related to the lawsuit, we have, Lori can answer those. But in terms of really generally talking about the proposed revisions, it's proposed that oil and gas facilities will be permitted in the IB district only as a special use. It would require a minimum of five acres for a lot size. There'd be numerous setback requirements and other standards that I'll go into really briefly. In terms of setbacks, it's proposed that there's a 300-foot minimum from any right-of-way, 500 feet from any residential zone or used property, or any place of worship, public or private school, or hospital, as well as 100 feet, it's got to be 100 feet from any property line. And reminding you that I mentioned earlier, there's a 500, excuse me, there's a five-acre minimum lot size. When we plot all these setbacks and the lot sizes, this is what we get. The green are those properties that could host an oil and gas facility based on those standards. You notice, this is Big Beaver, and most of our IB district is south of Big Beaver, so it's these green properties here. As I indicated, there's numerous fencing, landscaping, and lighting requirements proposed. There are nuisance and performance standards, and there's a number of specific submittal requirements, including environmental impact statement, reclamation plan, and operations plan. The operations plan includes a lot of information such as site ingress and egress and hall route map. This is a comparison. On the right are the standards I just went over and the proposed regulations. On the left are the present requirements of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for oil and gas facilities. Notice they're by right, and they've got to be located at least 450 feet from residential buildings. In terms of technical standards related to site development, that's it. So, there's a discrepancy there. Also, keep in mind, there's a proposed House Bill 5389, and what that essentially does, it's adding some additional provisions to the existing regulations I just went over. These revised provisions would apply to counties of a population of at least 3/4 of a million, which obviously Oakland County is. It would require that wells be located at least 1,320 feet from residential buildings instead of 450, so it would be an increase. The location of a well and all operations would have to be in compliance with local zoning, and the MDEQ would have to hold a public hearing. This bill was introduced February 18th, and it was referred to Committee, the Committee on Energy Policy, the same day. And that completes my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we do that, I'm going to open this public hearing. There are questions from council for staff at this point? I guess everyone's clear with staff's presentation and what this is about. I will call on Padma Kupa, Troy resident, who has signed up to speak on this item. Our time limit is three minutes for those that are going to speak this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I specifically am not speaking as a planning commissioner. I am speaking as a resident of the city of Troy. I have been a resident since 1998 at 4275 Marywood. I'm speaking as a resident who also cares about the safety and well-being of our entire community. While I understand that fracking is not something that we can prevent at a city level, I believe that this text amendment addresses the issues of oil and gas extraction in a reasonable way, something that our ordinances are silent upon. So, it would be good to have something there. Similar to the way our community is interested in keeping our trees and our green spaces, I believe that residents and property owners want to be protected from the ill effects of oil and gas extraction, and I think that this amendment would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Padma. Kelly Jones, Troy resident. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Kelly Jones. I'm a 17-year resident of Troy. In regards to the oil and gas extraction, I'm asking city council to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment being presented by the zoning commission. While I would like to see no fracking allowed in the state of Michigan, I ask council to at minimum support the zoning board's amendment that provides guidelines and restrictions for our city. Please put the safety of the Troy community first. Please protect our citizens from a potential irreversible disaster like those we've been witnessing across the country. According to the United States Geological Survey Program, in Oklahoma alone, of the earthquakes that were reported at a 3.5 magnitude or higher, between the years of 1973 and 2008, it averaged about 21 earthquakes per year. From 2009 to 13, about 99. In 2014, there were recorded 659 earthquakes in Oklahoma, and in 2015, 907, and they're being recorded daily. Not only is the Earth's foundation affected, but also our water systems, something we've been paying close attention to here in the state. Environmental groups and residents now have several lawsuits pending against the local governments, and it's just not worth it, so please adopt this amendment. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Return it to the table for resolution and discussion. Councilwoman Abraham.
I'll move Resolution E12 as printed.
Moved by Councilwoman Abraham, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve E1, E2, which is a public hearing for the zoning ordinance text amendment as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. Councilman Henderson.
Mayor, thank you. I, I can support this text amendment almost in its entirety. Where, where I step off of the, the support is with regard to fracking. And we had a, a joint session, as Mr. Savadant suggested here several months ago, and we had experts on both sides of the argument. One in support of fracking and oil extraction, and the other one, you know, is far, far more green than the other end. And the, the feeling in those meetings was that Oakland County in general doesn't, our geology does not support fracking. In other words, we can, we can drill a well here in, in Oakland County and get all the oil we want without having to pump the slurry of solutions down these wells and explode the, the rock underneath the, the earth to try to get these wells to, to pump oil. So, we don't, we don't need to do fracking. So, for us to, to put fracking specifically into a city ordinance in an area that we don't even need to have fracking done, it doesn't make any sense to me. And I just want to point to a couple of, couple of items in the, the memos, if I, if I can, that, that were presented at that meeting. One question, has there been one incident of fracking in Oakland County? And Mr. Fitch, who was with the MDEQ, quotes this, "I'm quite sure hydraulic fracturing has never been used in Oakland County. However, it would require a detailed review of each well record, uh, record to confirm that. I can say with certainty, there's never been a high-volume hydraulic fracturing operation in the county." Mr. Griffin, who was on the other side, says Hal Fitch is the best to answer this. So, he concurred with the, with the, the expert on, on that, that point. Next one, one of the council, or one of the planning commissioners asked for confirmation regarding the statement that the area of Troy does not lend itself to hydraulic fracturing companies. Mr. Fitch answered that the land and reservoirs in this area does not lend itself to hydraulic fracturing. This particular member asked Mr. Fitch to confirm that hydraulic fracturing in the state of Michigan has been safe so far. He commented, "There has not been an incident of environmental contamination from a hydraulic fracturing operation itself in the state of Michigan." She then further asked Mr. Griffin about his statement that when cities and townships create ordinances, and this is key, to control hydraulic fracturing, that he, he was of the opinion that it was better to regulate in the big picture instead of each municipality adopting individual regulations. Mr. Griffin answered that statewide regulations are best. Another, another council member at the time asked if there's been one incident of hydraulic fracturing in Oakland County. Mr. Fitch again answered that he is not aware of one. Another planning commissioner commented that if the land in Troy is not, is not conducive to fracking, then there will be no harm in enacting the proposed ordinance. Again, I argue that if, if we enact this ordinance, even though fraction, hydraulic fracturing is not required or, or necessary in Oakland County, what happens is our ordinance becomes a banner ordinance for other communities, which, you know, it's good to be a leader in something, but if, if we're not, if, if we're making ordinances just to simply tell other communities, "Yeah, go ahead and do it because, you know, this is the, the standard by which we think all of your ordinances should be," I think that's, that's dangerous ground in, in an area that I'm not willing to, to wrap my arms around. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Kind of to piggyback on, on what Councilman Henderson said, when we had our study session with the Planning Commission, City Attorney Bloom stated that there is a risk of being sued if the city passes an ordinance that is more restrictive than state regulations. And in that study session, also, if you recall, Farmington Hills was sued because their ordinance was alleged to be unduly prohibitive, and the city in Farmington Hills paid out on an out-of-court settlement. So, what worries me is, you know, we open ourselves to, up to a, you know, round of lawsuits from having tighter regulations in the state of Michigan. I mean, we all want, you know, safe properties. We want, we all want, you know, we don't want gas and oil companies drilling next door to us, but, you know, we don't need to be, you know, I just hope that this doesn't, you know, open us, open up a can of worms.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Abraham.
This ordinance is on oil and gas extraction, of which there are many techniques. Fracking is one of them. I think to exclude any one particular technique would be unwise. I, I think we need to make it as broad as possible because, to quote back from, from that same meeting back in July, that joint session, Mr. Nash, when asked that question, you know, "Does Detroit lend itself to hydraulic fracturing?", his answer was, "I can only repeat the claim that the formations aren't compatible with fracking. Future technologies may change that." And we know technology changes rapidly, faster than sometimes our ordinances can, can keep up with. I think it would be most prudent to retain those references and keep this ordinance as broad as possible to package protect for those type of technology advancements.
Thank you. Councilman Baker.
I think there's been good points mentioned so far. I, and I, I have to say, I agree with a piece of all of them, but I will go back to something that is ringing in my head after hearing our speakers, who I appreciate very much coming and taking that opportunity to speak to us. But, and my experience with fracking in general from the campaign last fall, it's a very hot political issue. It was very hot in Rochester Hills, and I have some concerns that we are inserting it, the prohibition, or the regulating fracking in the city of Troy as more of a political issue. And when the studies are showing that it's not even a technique that would be used here, but we, we do insert it here, it seems very political to me, and along the lines of what Councilwoman Henderson said, to, I, I have concerns also that other communities will use us as an example. See Troy's doing it, they'll say. They, they're regulating fracking. Well, that would be fine, except that, as I understand, we don't even have the option or the need to use fracking. The oil and gas extraction that we can do doesn't require, doesn't require fracking at all. So, I, I feel like it's a political move a little bit, and I, I know that we are a nonpartisan city that tries to take things very reasoned and very seriously, and I don't see the necessity for the inclusion of fracking in this ordinance, but I do support the ordinance otherwise. And with regard to Councilwoman Abraham's discussion of technology, it does move very fast. But as I understand, it's not the issue of, "We just don't have the technology yet to do fracking in Troy." It's that we don't need to at all. So, if we don't need to at all, I just don't see the need for the inclusion of it. And finally, as an attorney, and what Mayor Pro Tem Pennington brought up regarding potential risk for being sued, I do think that's something important for us to consider with any issue that comes before us. I too also would have concerns. I think this is perhaps best left as a state issue. We do have state legislation that is now pending. It's early in the stages, but it seems counterproductive to me to be having competing ordinance and state legislature at the same time, when we do need a uniform policy for the state. And again, especially when Oakland County is unique to the fact that it, there's not a need for fracking regulation because fracking's not an issue. So, I'm pleased to have this discussion. I think it's interesting, and I, I just have some concerns that this is being done as a political football. And I know that you're very passionate about it, those who have spoken, but I just, I'd like to see some of the politics kept out of this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick.
I think everyone can tell, there's been a great deal of thought been put into this by our planning commission, by council. We've met jointly. That was reviewed in this presentation, but this, this has been a very serious discussion for all of us, and it's, it's not crystal clear for everyone involved in the decision-making. And here's kind of a summary of where I've come out on it. The language that was brought before us by planning commission is consistent with what I believe to be two important criteria, is we all work together to make the best decisions for our city. I, I'm not worried about other cities. I was elected to serve this city and these residents and these property values. So, that's, that's the context of my decision-making. First of all, it helps us meet many of the criteria set forth in our master plan. Essentially, I find it to be consistent with the spirit of our master plan and reflective of specific approaches outlined in the master plan for the various regions of the city, specifically the region that Mr. Savadant focused on here tonight. Second, I think this proactively helps us set a standard of trust and assurance for the continued safety and protection of our property for our residents. I don't think safety is a political issue. I think it's a very real one, and people are very, very focused on it right now. Essentially, the debate on fracking causes me to ponder which side of the fracking debate discussion to err on, both scientifically speaking as well as from a perception standpoint. I make no apology at this point in time choosing to proactively err on the side of risk aversion to mitigate the worry and anxiety on the part of our city stakeholders. How do we quantify the value of this? How do we debate whether we might get sued or not? Frankly, there could be lawsuits from either side of the question. I just don't know all the answers to that and how to quantify it. But setting the practice of spreadsheet governance and spreadsheet capitalism aside to look at our city pragmatically and holistically, the decision for me is very clear to support this. It's erring on the side of our community feeling protected. It's an ordinance that focuses and is consistent with our master plan and where this kind of work should be done versus where it shouldn't be done in our city. If the state comes through with legislation, I'm not sure I have faith in that, we can revisit our ordinance. If it doesn't, we can sleep at night and feel at peace that we've thought through what makes sense for our city in the context of the very many concerns that are out there.
Thank you. Let's, let's let everyone speak once before we go twice, if we could. Any other comments? If I could make comments before, thank you. You know, I, I support that. I, I have like zero faith in the state passing a House bill regarding this. Currently, there was one submitted, and there are currently, I believe, nine bills in, in the state right now for this. They're not going to pass anything, and they're not going to pass anything in, in the near future on this, and, and that's my opinion. And I'm severely bothered by what the state did to the city of Southfield when the city of Southfield City Council just asked for a moratorium. And what did the MDEQ do? They didn't honor that. They went ahead and, and gave a permit, which has been since stifled by the courts. So, my faith in the state, making our decisions for us in this, in the city of Troy are zero. I think that if you want home rule, you should want home rule. Okay? You can't, you can't have it both ways. The city of Troy is a home rule city. We want to make decisions for ourself. We don't want the state of Michigan making those decisions for us. We want to do what's best for our citizens and the people that live in our community. So, that's an easy decision to me, whether it should be the city of Troy doing the regulating or the state of Michigan doing the regulating. All you have to do is look at a, at a city up north of us a little bit and, and see what can happen when you, when you allow that to happen. So, this kind of boiled down to me very simply, when, when we did have one of the speakers come in and say, their main concern was if each individual city starts passing their own local ordinances, that could have an effect on the entire state if enough communities came together, passed their own ordinances that, that would prohibit fracking and, and drilling. And I thought about that, and it was my deciding factor whether I was going to support the entire ordinance or not. And I, I've come to the conclusion that, you know, darn it, if every community in the state of Michigan decides on their own that they don't want this, and they, and they, let's say 80% of them decide to pass their own ordinances that they don't want it, then I think that's the way it should be. I think there should be home rule. I think each community should decide whether they want it or not, and every, if every one of them decides to do it, then gosh darn it, they ought to be able to do it and not have the state of Michigan come in and tell you that you, that they should be the ones telling us what we should and what we shouldn't do. So, this, this whittled down to a, a easy decision to me because as one of the, the questions was asked and answered today for us by city administration, city administration said that this proposed ordinance is intended to cover any future technology advances or discoveries which may lead to the use of a fracking process. And they also told us, the administration, that one underlying theme of the proposed ordinance is to treat all, all, oil and gas extraction the same. And that just makes total sense to me, that we should be treating them all the same. Now, as far as the lawsuit goes, we don't want to govern by fear, okay? This city's always been a leader. Every city that I know of, and I've been around this city a long time, has always looked up to the city of Troy as a leader, not a follower. And everything I've heard from our residents and everything that I've read from, from other communities is, we don't want fracking in our residential communities, okay? Very simply. So, I am going to support this, this ordinance as written for all of the reasons that, that I've discussed this evening. So, I'll call on Councilman Baker.
I withdraw. I'm not informed.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this ordinance? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I want to especially thank the planning commission for all the hard work that, that they did on this, this ordinance. Certainly helped in my decision-making, but most importantly, I think it was the joint meeting that we had between the planning commission and the city council that, that made this easy for us. So, thank you for that. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up for that this evening. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business, board and committee appointments. I have a, a mayoral vacancy on the DDA. I am going to be speaking with someone this week, and I plan to make that nomination at the next council meeting. There are no city council appointments, so we will move to I2, which are board and committee nominations. I don't have any nominations, but I would turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. There is actually no nominations tonight, but we have multiple committees that need, need members. If you look, on the traffic committee, we have two openings. In the liquor advisor committee, we have one opening. The charter revision committee, we have two openings, and we have one opening on the animal control appeal board. If you have experience in these matters or have a inclination to help out your city, this would be a, you know, a good this would be a, you know, a good time to step forward. We need, you know, in regards to the traffic committee, it'd be nice if you had engineering experience, but we don't have to have that. I mean, we're looking for, for people to help out, so we'd appreciate, you know, call us. We'll get you, point you in the right direction.
Thank you, Ed. I think we've tried to call, make a call-out to the citizens to, to get them involved, and we just, I guess, need to just keep doing that. It's tough to get people to come forward. Everybody has a busy life and things, but I don't think you can do anything better for your community than to give back. So let's get some people signing up here. Next on the agenda is I-3. It's a request for closed session. Would somebody like to move that resolution? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I'll move I-3 as printed, or should I re, would you prefer that I read it or not? I-3 as printed?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Baker that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session this evening as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Motion passes. I-5, the 2016 strategies with an introduction by, whoop. I'm sorry, thank you. I-4, the policy for naming public parks and public amenities with an introduction by City Attorney Bloom and her staff, I'm sure. Good evening. I'm sorry, Laurie, to pass you over like that.
No, that's, that's fine, Mayor. No, no problems at all. Actually, instead of my staff, I do have a staff member here tonight, but that's for the closed session later on. But instead, I do want to give kudos to Kurt Bovensee, Ben Elainebow, and also City Manager Kishnik, because this has been a team effort in providing these proposed revisions to the park naming policy. And I would just say that the development of the Dog Park has really caused us to review the current policy that has been in place. The, the last naming was done in 2010. That was Melverton Park. So the latest revision of our parks naming policy was completed by city council in 2009. This proposal, I'm just going to highlight a couple of the, the points. You have a redline version from the 2009 policy and also a clean copy. The numbering is off, and I apologize for that. We included it in the document, and so, so I apologize for that. But just in a nutshell, this does allow for additional sponsorship opportunities. Another thing that it does is it no longer prohibits the memorial parks restriction that was previously there. Also allows for parks to be named for living persons as well as deceased persons. Allows organizations to make in-kind contributions and kind of clarifies that that's sixty percent. Most importantly, I think, is it streamlines the process for the park naming. You still have the ultimate responsibility for naming the parks, but this just sets forth the process and, and kind of makes it, makes sure that there is a process to be followed. Another thing that this does is it allows for what I'll call campaigns. For example, the Dog Park, there's a, an opport, there's a, right now, an effort to try and get some money to do that development, and I would call that a campaign. And it does allow for you to approve a certain number, means that you'll get a park bench named for you, or, you know, something of that nature. It would indicate that it was unanimously approved by the Parks and Recreation Board on February 18th, and I have reviewed the past policies as well, if you have any questions about that. We haven't done this too often. June of 1986, just with the naming of the Donald J. Flynn Park, was a opportunity for us to, to review it. And then also August 2003, when there was a, another proposal for naming of the park. So, so, and then 2009, which has already been referenced, and now. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Kurt and Elaine and City Manager Kishnik are also here and can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Just a short comment. Thank you for doing this. It makes it a lot easier for, for the Dog Park and, and other parks. It was, it was overdue. Thank you. Thank you for staff. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Uh, isn't there? Mayor?
Yes.
There hasn't been a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I keep wanting to pass this one over. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I will move I-4, the policy for naming public parks and public amenities as printed.
Move by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve I-4 as printed in the document. Now, is there further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks again for all your hard work. Now we can go to I-5. 2016 strategies with an introduction by City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. I'm, I know you were all trying to get to this item on the agenda. As you know, we had very, very good attendance at our retreat February 26th and 27th, and so we were glad to bring everyone together from the Planning Commission, the DDA, staff, and the city council to talk about many different things, but at the end, we always do the strategies. And so I want to thank, as, as part of that laborious process, we, staff sent out a survey that everyone filled out based on the four elements, and then a fifth missing element that you could submit. We put those, condensed those into five in the different categories, and then presented them at the retreat as a result of the discussion after that. With, after the breakout sessions, you know, we had the, the group discussion, and then from that, we compiled these ten strategies. And in that group who did a lot of the work was Maggie Hughes, Alex Belik from IT, Scott Mercer, and Ina. Worked really hard on that to bring many people's ideas to a condensed ten strategies. Now, we, we've started these strategies a couple of years ago, and what it is, is, what it is, is the first step in the process of putting the budget together. Even though we have the department requests, and we've done a lot of work as staff on the budget, this is really a first step to see where are we going? Are we willing to put funding where it's needed with these strategies? And we'll talk about that as we go through the budget process, as everyone in this council, I think, knows. This year with the strategies, we took a, a significant turn in terms of, in the past, it's been very general. For example, celebrate diversity. There's a lot that can go into that. And so now, if you look at number eight, launch the Global Troy Advisory Committee. It's very specific. So you may be saying to yourself, and of course, we said it to our, ourselves, I say it to myself every night, seems like strategies isn't the right word, right? These look, and Councilmember Abraham talked to me about this today. So I thought about it ever since we talked about it today, and I, I really will, I go to the point of this. We have the Y statement on there for a reason, and these are the strategies that we incorporate to meet the Y statement. And the Y statement is basically, we believe in doing government the best amongst other things. And when we come to work every morning, this should be a focus, and this should be our strategy for the day, to do something on this list. And at the end of the year, and in the memo Maggie Hughes wrote, it does say that these are simply ten strategies, in no prioritized order, by the way. These are just ten strategies that we will accomplish. It doesn't say we may accomplish. It says we will accomplish, and as you know, when we get to my evaluation, these are part of that discussion to make sure that we did approve these. So we'll be looking at last year's strategies during that evaluation. So I won't go over the ten. You can see them there. They're in your packet, and we, we, we put them up in a lot of different places so people know this is what we're looking at for 2016. But let's just know how specific we are in these strategies. Create space for a customer service welcome center at the east entrance of City Hall. Something needs to be done with the east entrance of City Hall. We've talked about that for two years. I, I think most reasonable people can agree. If not, I have a video to show you of people that were not directed. Redesign the city of Troy website. You know, that's pretty specific, and that's something that's, you know, evolves all the time now. Used to be, websites are, you know, you have to constantly stay on them and, and upgrade them. So link Civic Center campus with a trail and pathway system. That's pretty specific. And I think we all, you know, realize that that's one direction we're, we're looking at right now after a year of examining other routes and, and options. So I won't go over them all, but this is something that we ask council to consider for adoption so that we may continue the budget process with this as a focus. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council for Mr. Kishnik? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
This was the third retreat that we had with, with staff, city council, and this time Planning Commission was invited, and, and we had a great rapport back and forth with everyone. The attendance was amazing. I think all of Planning Commission, I think, was all of city council there? Oh, no, that's right.
Here we go.
Almost all of us were there.
We didn't take attendance.
But we, it was, it was phenomenal. They, the ideas that we came up with, the, the strategies moving forward, great job. It was well, well worth the weekend.
Any other comments from council? I'll echo that, Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, and it's gotten better every year or two, you know? And it's a credit to your staff, I think, for, for working so hard to put it together. It was kind of, kind of neat to be at the Kresge Foundation and then be at Walsh College and find out that the architect was the same architect that did the foundation and did Walsh College. And when you knew that, you could look at it and, and see some, some of the similarities there, but it was a, it was a great time.
As you know, Mayor, Maggie Hughes was the point person on that project this year, and it was, it was great comments, so.
I think one of the best things people can tell you when you go to something like that is that the time went by like, like that, and I think Mayor Pro Tem Pennington said that to me, and I think that's, that tells you it was good. So, thank you. Somebody like to move this resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-5 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I-5, the 2016 strategies as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items city council wishes to pull this evening? If not, if somebody could move that resolution? Councilman Henderson, thank you.
I'd like to move all items on a consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and is supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion on any of those items? I was going to comment on South Boulevard, if I could. It's been, been something I've been nagging about for, for quite a while, and I just want to say thank you to, to Kurt Bovensee, Bill Houdery, and staff for finding a way to get the intersection of Rochester and South Boulevard and parts of South Boulevard done. If you've driven up there, long overdue. So thanks to Kurt and Bill Houdery and staff for doing that. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you're hearing a consent agenda item, they've all been approved this evening. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. If you will note, K-2A is a report on the proposed amendments to Chapter 18, which is the city water utility, and 19, the city sewer service, and 20, the water and sewer rates of the city code. So if there's any discussion on that, we will be addressing that at the next council meeting. Next, our public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I will call upon Pat Christensen, Troy resident. It was waited very patiently for us this evening.
No, I was hoping I'd be last. It was just me and the council.
Uh-oh. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Actually, mine is in regard to the widening of I-75. And contrary to belief, I'm for it. I'm happy. I'm glad to be part of it. The only thing is, is I live in a residence called Manor Homes of Troy, and basically, our backyard is I-75. Now, when it was first built, basically where we were was nothing but forest, big trees, whatever. So whenever they put in I-75, where there was residences, they put in a barrier wall between the homes and I-75. However, since we were just trees, we didn't have a barrier. So thirty years ago, whenever they built Manor Home, basically, we had still the trees. That was our barrier. Well, fifty years, thirty years, whatever, those trees, half of them now are dead. The other half are overgrown, and they're way too tall. So in other words, they're not a, a buffer anymore, because in the summer, when the leaves do come out, they're way up there. So what I'm asking is just please, if you as a body could present our case for those who live in Troy, who are next to I-75, who don't have a barrier wall, would the road commission consider us? Because there's only certain windows you can ask for a wall, is whenever a lot of money is involved. So right now, I understand it's one billion. So I'm hoping that since we pay some of our taxes to go into the, you know, widening, that you sort of consider the residents of Troy and, you know, put in a barrier wall only where it's needed, where residents are, that didn't have one put in when I-75 came through, because it is very noisy. And whenever they do the widening, you're going to have a couple more things. Construction, very noisy, and also whenever they break up the concrete, you're going to have a lot of pollution. We probably won't be able to open our windows because there's going to be dust from breaking up concrete. So I'm asking you as a body, would you be able to go and present our case as citizens to the road commission and to, you know, Mr. Patterson, to ask for a little bit of money to be set aside to put walls up strictly where the residents have homes that no longer have barriers between us and I-75? Okay.
Thank you. When we're done with public comment here, we're going to, we'll have some, some feedback on that, so if you bear with us for about five more minutes.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call on James Savage, Troy resident. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor Slater. Good evening, city council. I left some flyers on here, which I'm sure most of you are aware of, and if you look on the back, there's a special for the Troy High School. Okay, what I would like here is to take the opportunity to promote the, the dinner dance on April 14th. The monthly dances are put on by the Troy Community Center for the benefit of the community. Last April was our first anniversary dance, but it was somewhat shadow, overshadowed by this city's 60th anniversary event and a lot of other activities going on at that time. We believe the anniversary dinner dance should be the Troy social event- We believe the anniversary dinner dance should be the Troy social event of the year, where for a modest $20 per person, ladies and gentlemen, you can enjoy with their families, friends, or neighbors a good meal and a whole evening of dancing and entertainment in a very familiar and elegant setting. We do not have a dress code, but we do discourage jeans and sweatshirts. Tables of eight can be reserved at time of sign-up online or at the community center. March 31st is deadline to sign up. The music will be mostly from the 40s and 50s, which has lasted all these years and is still quite popular with many young people today. We have many attractions in Troy, ranging from hooters to pecanos, bowling alleys, sports bars, et cetera. But we have never really replaced the local dance hall, whether it be the Village Hall, the Graystone Ballroom, or the Waldorf Astoria. Since we started the dances two years ago, a friendly, social atmosphere has evolved. So, I urge anyone here in the audience or in the television audience who likes good music and good company to join us the second Thursday of every month, and he reminds the dinner dance on April 14th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Savage. Quite a following you have, Mr. Savage. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents. So, next on the agenda are city council or city administration response. Just ask City Manager Kishnik if you wanted to respond to the I-75 question.
Certainly, and having seen those plans just a little bit, and Mr. Hutterick's here, but I think it would be most helpful to have her meet with Bill and Steve and look at the plans in their office, because there are different, you know, I don't know what year we're talking about and what stretch we're talking about. I think there are a lot of design guidelines and plans, and there's only one section being talked about right now. So, let's meet with Bill after this meeting. He's a good-looking guy in the back with the glasses, with the hand up, and he can really roll out plans with you, you know, make an appointment and go over the whole thing. So, it is an MDOT job, though?
Yes.
It's not a road commission job?
Yeah, sometimes our hands are tied somewhat with MDOT, but Mr. Hutterick can explain everything to you. So, thank you. Any other council comments? There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilman Baker?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to speak briefly on the passing of Nancy Reagan. I've spoken a lot over the past year or so to many of you up here and throughout the city, and many of you do know that I worked for President Mrs. Reagan in the post-presidential office in Los Angeles for the last five years of the president's life. And I was out in California last week for Mrs. Reagan's funeral and helped prepare the services with the staff that I had worked with years before and all of my friends. I just, I think it's important to honor the life and legacy of Nancy Reagan. She was a very influential first lady for us. I know this is a, this is a city council meeting, but Mrs. Reagan influenced every one of us in many ways. I can imagine that Councilwoman Abraham shared my experience in school with the Just Say No program. We're about the similar age, and, you know, that program influenced so many youth throughout our country and right here in the city of Troy, which I think is important. And interesting fact, I'm not sure if many of you know this, but the Just Say No program, the phrase "Just Say No" actually was very casually started. Mrs. Reagan was speaking to a class and telling them the importance of not doing drugs, and one of the kids asked her, "Mrs. Reagan, what do we do if someone tries to get us to take this drug?" And she said, "Well, just say no." And, you know, that's how the whole program started, and I, it was very influential for me, and, you know, it wasn't a perfect program. It didn't work for everybody, obviously, but it did affect a lot of lives, and I think made a big difference in our community. I attended the funeral last week, and Mrs. Reagan was a wonderful person. I will tell you, I was terrified of her when I started working for them. But, you know, I love her, and I will always love her now, and I, she became a friend of mine after I stopped working for the president and her. She was obviously a boss, and, well, she was my first lady first, and then she was a boss, and then she became a friend, and I spoke with her very regularly, both in person in California and on the phone, and she was a wonderfully warm woman that was a fierce and loyal advocate for her husband, and I think that, I think you will understand and agree with me here, those of us who are in elected position obviously make that choice for ourselves and sometimes drag our spouses or significant others along for the ride, and they don't always have a say in how we do things, but those spouses and other people and family members in our lives, just like Mrs. Reagan was to President Reagan, are really saints, because they, they often get the heat, but they don't get to say anything back. And I just think it's important that we value who our first ladies are, potential first gentlemen in the future, or whatever that may be, but I'm a little bit rambling here. I'm sorry, but it is emotional for me. I just want to make sure that you all, if you haven't had a chance to think about what Mrs. Reagan has done for this country, please look something up about her online, or ask somebody, or ask me afterwards. I think it's important that we remember her. She was a wonderful lady and someone I will miss very much.
Thank you. It's a cool story.
Yeah.
It's a cool story. Any other council comments? Next on the agenda is reports. Any council comments on the reports that are in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is a closed session this evening, so thank you for coming this evening. We will be adjourned, or we're not going to adjourn. We're just going to take a break and go into closed session. If there are some students here that need their papers signed, please get up here ASAP so we can sign those for you. Thank you for coming tonight.